So today we have Ms. Parsons here. We are talking about the school board position at Cape Penlopen School District. You, when did you start kind of the idea or to run or thinking about, you know, coming up on the school board?
Well, first of all, thank you so much for having me.
No, absolutely.
Very much a pleasure to be here. So I think that I started thinking about this a few years ago.
Okay.
When I wasn't quite getting the help and support that I needed from the schools and I was trying to figure out a way that I could make a greater impact and help more students with the same issues that that I needed help with at home.
Yeah.
I started very seriously thinking about it about a year ago, talking to people, investigating what it would take. And then the filing started January 1, I believe. I filed on January 8th and just sealed it in. And because I knew that I was serious.
And you're like, there's no turn back.
There's no turning back.
Now I'm in and assigned to do it.
There's no turning back.
Well, I think that's something that's, that's really cool. And you know, obviously we've had some discussions prior to us starting this, which was good. But the fact, you know, this area is comprised of just so many different demographics from, you know, transplants and people that moved down here to our Sussex County, you know, through and through, born and raised. And there's, oh, I think there's always this balance between, you know, the Sussex side of people that, you know, were here, you know, grew up with dirt roads and when there was no cars and now they, now there's not, and now there's transplants and everything. You, you and your husband moved here in 2013. So you're not quite, hey, just came here in 2021 and I wanted, you know, bring North Jersey and turn this into North Jersey. But you're also not, you know, kind of, hey, I want dirt roads again.
Absolutely.
Let's get back. So I think that it's, it's actually really, really great. And me being a transplant as well, and I have, you know, a 13 year old who's in seventh grade, I have an eight year old who's in second grade. You have three kids that are in the elementary side of it. You know, for me, hearing that you kind of have a, I think a balance, a balanced voice on kind of, you know, in between, you know, I don't want this to be North Jersey. I don't want this to be New York's school districts. I love Cape Penlopen School District, but nothing is perfect.
No.
So, you know.
We're doing a great job. The school district is doing a fabulous job, but there's always room for improvement.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, I think always, and you know, I always say, you know, I think, I like to say that our real estate team is, we're pretty good at what we do. But the second that we stop trying to improve, or the second that we stop trying to learn, or the second that we stop trying to, you know, provide a better experience for our clients, we're going backwards. So I think that that applies for everything, whether it's real estate, whether it's a school board, whether it's, you know, you're building cars or whatever, you have to constantly be trying to evolve.
Absolutely.
And move forward, you know, for what you think is right. And also all of the people around you. And I think one thing that jumped out to me a lot was when we were talking, how you, you made the comment regarding, you know, I go through this with my kids, you know, we can have the discussions with our teachers and make changes for our kids. And it's, but it's super granular and it's super grassroots and it doesn't, you know, we'll make the change at a very low level. And, you know, you're willing to give up your time because this is not a paid position. Give up time to do those at a higher level, which then changes it for everybody.
Absolutely. The things that, the things that I can see that my kids need help with, there's 6,600 other kids in the district that deserve those, those same things.
Sure.
They deserve the same supports, the same resources. And I'm determined to get it for every single one of them.
Yeah. And I, you know, again, another thing that we talked about, which I think is maybe like your staple point where you're kind of, you know, really kind of, you know, where you're putting your flag in the ground is on technology. You know, it's 2025. We are so fortunate compared to other school districts and not just here. I mean, around the, the country, around the world. And we have a lot of resources that are available to us. We have amazing schools. I mean, our elementary schools are the, I think they're all new at this point.
All 10 schools have been either renovated or rebuilt in the past 10 years.
Beautiful, stunning schools.
State of the art.
Just absolutely, absolutely fantastic. And we have the technology to, you know, support that, which is an amazing thing, but can become a double digit sword, I think, at times.
Sure can. No, we're so fortunate. A lot of districts don't have the one-to-one technology. So it's critical that we are training our kids how to use it, how to have them on the front lines of the rapid, rapid advancements that are happening daily in our world so that they can be successful when they leave the system. But at the same time, we need to show them how to use them safely. And we need to protect them with them. It's critical. It's critical.
And, and you, you use the word one-to-one and what exactly, what is that?
Every child has their own device.
Yeah.
Nobody's sharing. Yep.
So like they, I know the first day of school.
Yep.
They get assigned, you know, a tablet, you know, iPad or whatever it might be. And they have it, you know, every night. My wife always goes, put your iPads on the charger and have it charged ready for school, which is super unique from a lot of perspectives. You know, we had some snow in January, which is a little bit unique. You know, we don't tend to get a lot of snow. So when it did happen, we were a little bit paralyzed there for, for a time period. It came right on the heels of Christmas break. So it's like, here we are, we got the kids at home for another week and the school says, we're going asynchronous. So it was, it was awesome because the kids have their iPads, iPads at home and, you know, the teachers hop on and we're still teaching even though they're at home. And then got to go enjoy the snow at the same time. So it has huge benefits.
Yes.
Huge, huge benefits. And there are other school districts in Sussex County that do not have the funds, that do not have the means to do that.
Yep.
But yes, you know, to your point, it is an open source.
It is. So we need to optimize. My, my main goal is to optimize what we have so that they are using these not just to numb, numb their minds and scroll endlessly and to get into things that they shouldn't be getting into, but to better them, better them.
Yep. Yeah. I mean, you know, we know, I mean, they're, they're an open source tablet and they have access to Safari, which is the web browser and YouTube and all these apps, which are extremely helpful in doing research for papers and everything, but also have a whole nother side to them.
Absolutely. They can find themselves. They can, they don't have the impulse control to know when to stop going down a certain path.
Sure.
They don't have the knowledge to know what, what sources are not good for them, not age appropriate. So while the school has safeguards, there's just, there's still a lot of vulnerability.
Yeah.
And I've witnessed that in my own home. And because of that, I've, I've been very vocal with the district, with the technology department. And like I said, when my kids leave my home, I can, I can do everything that I want in my home to teach them how to use it safely.
Yeah.
To limit what they're doing. But the minute they walk out the door, that's, it's no longer within my control.
Yeah.
So we just need to really, to really rein this in, to make sure that everyone is protected because they can go to school. I can protect them. I can, I can teach them endlessly and they can go sit next to the other kid at school and get into the same, get into the same trouble.
And there's, I mean, we all know, just like, you know, in the eighties when smoking was more prevalent, you know, we teach them not to, and they go and they, you know, they learn from their peers. And that's unfortunate, you know, it's why peer pressure comes in. So it's, it's nice to know. And to your point, you know, yes, we wake up, we dress our kids and then we drop them off at school. And we are now, you know, they're crossing the threshold going into the school and we're saying, we are now instilling our children's safety and knowledge, you know, with you. Have you found, and I didn't ask you this earlier, but have you found any other school districts coast to coast that have kind of already found some types of ways of kind of reining that in a little bit that there, that we could mimic? Or have you?
So some districts have, well, there's a couple of things. And, and actually in Cape Penlopen, it's interesting because it varies from school to school. So some of the schools don't send their iPads home every day, which is helpful.
Yeah.
To, to really regulate what they're seeing. And other districts have just different, uh, different parameters for different ages. So the younger children might not have access to Safari or Google or YouTube at all. They can still have access to their learning applications, but they don't have carte blanche access. You know, things are, and this is not in any way about censorship at all. This is just about keeping our young kids safe from.
Seeing what they need to see.
Seeing what they need to see. Yep.
They're going to school to learn.
Yep.
You know, there's only certain, there's, they should only be seeing what it is that they're working on or what they're learning. I, I do agree, it gets, you know, when we get older, when we get into like high school and they're doing papers.
Researching. Yes.
And, you know, and we're trying to, you know, you kind of have to loosen it up because eventually they're going to be out in the world.
Of course.
But at an elementary school.
Yes.
We're not there yet.
No, we're not there yet. And it's, we need more education, constant education. I think with most topics in child raising, it's, it's constant, it's repetition.
Yeah.
It's, it's not just once at the beginning of the year saying, this is how, this is how you're going to be safe. Don't talk to strangers on the internet. Don't accept invitations from, from people on games or whatever it might be, or don't go down this, don't go down this path. So it's constant. It's constant reeducating.
Yeah. I mean, we do it with my, my youngest, she's eight and she plays these games. And you know, my oldest will say, you know, hey, she just, you know, she's talking with someone and we just, you know, hey, you can't, you can't do that. And we try to explain why.
Yes.
You know, and then this is, it's actually kind of good that it's happening under our supervision. So we can explain it.
Yep.
So that it doesn't, so she knows next time not to do that. It's hard though, when, you know, but those are typically on devices that we're providing.
For sure.
So now I'm responsible for that.
Whole different volume.
I feel like it's the same thing though, that when, if a device is being provided by a school, now they're responsible kind of for the content, you know, that they're, that they have access to. You know, I should be watching the, the, the devices that I'm providing.
For sure, for sure, for sure, for sure. Yes.
Which is good. I, I kind of glanced over a little bit or skimmed over a little bit of kind of your background, your history, where you came from. I, I know your, your husband well. He is in the real estate industry as well. I've known him since I, I got into this and Eric's a fantastic person.
Thank you.
And, you know, you guys came, you know, came into the area, like I said earlier, in 2013. You're from outside of the Philly area.
Yeah. Grew up in Lancaster.
Yep. Which is, uh, yeah, we had some fun talks about Lancaster. Lancaster, you know, which is, I don't know, from my experience, is really, a really nice, calm, family.
Very much so.
Oriented area, which I think we hang our hat on that here as well. So it draws great parallel. It's not like you're coming from, no offense to anyone from New York City, but from like, you know, urban atmosphere to where it's fast, busy cabs everywhere. It's a very slow mentality lifestyle like we have here. So I think it draws a really solid parallel to, to this, to this area, to our school systems here. I don't know the school systems there. I don't know if they were good or bad.
Fabulous.
Were they? Okay.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Public, yes. I, I think that I went to, I mean, I credit my teachers and my administrators for pushing me to be the person that I am. I was, I was in the hardest classes possible and I struggled and clawed and scratched to, to be successful. And I did it because they knew I could.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have ever chosen those classes myself. They, they really pushed me to excel. And that meant that was everything.
I think our teachers do that here, which is, I don't think that they, that they pander to, um, you know, kids giving up on themselves or taking the easy path, uh, which I, I've truly and honestly, just, I adore that aspect that they allow kids to push themselves and not just say, it's okay just to be mediocre. Not there's anything wrong with being mediocre. I mean, it's perfectly fine, but there are, but it's okay to say, you know, you can do better if you want to. Go, go for it.
Absolutely.
Give it a shot. What's the worst thing that happens? You know, life is full of ups and downs and failures or whatever. And if you don't fail, you never win. And so like, and I think they do, I really credit our school system for their kind of vision and with education and the way that they, you know, and also opportunities that they give, you know, the honors, the CAP program, the CAP program, for people that don't know, do some research on CAP, the CAP program, you know, academic challenge. I mean, it is just really, really.
All the extracurriculars.
Yeah, it's really, really cool.
Stellar. Yeah, no, we're very lucky. And they do, they really push the children to try everything.
Yeah.
To be really well-rounded. I have a son who was, who decided to be in school play this year. I never, I never saw that coming. And he, the minute it was over, he said, I can't wait for the play next year.
Uh huh.
Like I, I, I never thought, I have another son who tried the trombone this year. I mean, I can't yodel. I, he, and, and it's fabulous. The, the clubs that the schools offer, the community support, the community involvement in these, in these programs is.
Yeah.
Is, is remarkable. And we're so lucky.
But, you know, to our original point, that's, is all fantastic, but we want to continue to grow it.
Of course.
And we have, uh, two seats that are available. You said right now on the school board. One is an at-large and that.
That's right.
At-large means is that the whole covers.
Yes. So that means that anybody that lives in the district can run for that seat.
Okay.
That's only for the, it's only pertains to the candidates.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you are a candidate. You have to, so basically if we were to take the whole map that consists of Cape Penlopen School District, they chop up the map and then they say, there's only people that live within certain areas can run for certain seats.
That's right.
But you will represent the entire area, the entire school board. So you are within kind of the Greater Lewis, you know, style area, which is where there's an opening because someone resigned.
Yes.
And now there's, and that's what you're running for. And there's some other candidates that are running for that as well.
So there's, yes, there's three of us running for Area C and two people for running at large.
Okay.
And anybody in the entire district can vote, you get two votes. You get one for the Area C and one for the at-large.
Okay.
Yep. So you don't have to live. It's really the only, the map thing is really just for the candidates. Yeah. Everyone else can just kind of forget about that.
So if, if anyone that's listening to this, that they live in Rehoboth, or they live in Milton, they can also have a voice because, yes, you live in Lewis, but you are going to be representing them.
Yep.
Whether their kids go to Milton Elementary or Rehoboth Elementary, or the two, you know, or also the middle school and high school.
Yep, exactly. And you don't have to have kids in the district. You don't have to have kids at all.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Everybody, and it's important. People, people forget, I've heard from a lot of people, like, this isn't important to me. I don't need to vote. I don't have children here. Well.
Oh, no.
Greatly important.
Yeah. Trust me, from this side, on the real estate side, it is, you know, I mean.
Greatly important.
A huge part of our property value is our, our school district. And, and look, you know, it's, it's not like in order to have a voice in what's going on. And look, if you're on social media, if you're, you know, if you follow Cape Gazette, you're going to hear about what's going on. And number, if you, if you don't get involved or you're not voting on, don't, you can't complain. Don't, if you don't like what it is and you didn't, you know, kind of put your vote in, whether you have kids in the school or not, you know, I hate to say, don't complain, but you, you had your opportunity to kind of put, vote the person in that aligns with what you're looking for.
Absolutely.
Number one. But number two, I mean, our, our school district, again, we, I think we have a great school district, which is.
Yes.
You know, which helps support.
Yes.
Property values. So.
Sure does. And, and the school board's responsible for setting the tax base, the local tax base. A lot of people, I'm not sure if people know that. So.
Yeah, that's important to know.
It's, it's very important to know. And, um, you know, a lot of the, especially the people who don't have children in the schools, they wonder what's in it for them. And it's, do, we need to have our scores to be competitive, to recruit people to the area.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. You hear a lot, you can't get a doctor's appointment here. Well, if our scores aren't competitive and we're trying to, to woo a doctor here and they come and they say, you know, oh my gosh, these, these schools aren't good enough. I'm not moving here. I'm not raising my, I'm not letting my kids go to school here. Well, fortunately, our scores are great. They're actually the best in the state.
Just want to keep them there.
Uh huh. And we, and, and that's not even good enough.
Yeah.
We need to be continually improving them. Yep.
Well, and, and not only that, you know, we have to remember also, we don't want to recruit a doctor who's only, has two years till you retire. And so we're recruiting younger doctors who potentially could either have children or may have children in the future, that their kids are going to be, going to be involved in a school district. So we want to continue this. It's kind of like the schools really kind of set the foundation for the area.
They are the foundation.
On so many platforms, so many platforms. Again, even, you know, on the, I never thought on the recruiting side of, for, for our medical side. It's, it's very true. It's.
I mean, they need to, they need to move to a place where they, they're confident raising their family.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah. And, and, you know, again, I think we're, we're so blessed because of the school district. I know, we have other great school districts in Sussex County. I moved from, from Wilmington, you know, North Wilmington, Delaware. It's a completely different, you know, climate up there, uh, not temperature wise. I mean, from the school, school perspective. And it was great. The first thing that we did was we took our kids out of private school and put them in the public school down here. And it was like, wow, we just got a raise.
Absolutely.
This is great. Yeah. We, I mean, we were in kindergarten spending $10,000 a year. And we were so nervous because we went from a school that was 25 kids in the class to, I think that K to five was like 760 kids or something. And we're like, oh my goodness, she's going to get lost. And she's used to like, the, the principal knew exactly who she was at her old school because there's 25 kids per class. And it was amazing how even with as many kids, they, it was the same, it was like the same experience. The principal knew who every kid was.
Sure they do.
And like, not knew of them as, but as a name, they knew them. Kind of what was their thing. And I just, I don't know. We've just had, maybe we're, we're lucky. I don't think that we're unique.
No, I don't, no, I don't, I don't think it's luck. I think that we do a great job in Cape Penlopen of recruiting the best teachers, the best administrators. Um, we have, our retention is, was that we were the only district in the state last year that was fully staffed.
Really?
Yeah. That's a, that's unheard of.
Yeah.
Uh huh. That's unheard of. Because if kids, yeah, if we don't have the staff, we are, then our classes are overcrowded, then the kids can't properly learn. So that's huge. These statistics are huge. We've done a great job.
Yeah. And it's, it's a, it's a beautiful area to be in. So, you know, we support the, the beautiful area with the beautiful schools. And I think that, you know, again, bringing people in to have kind of a vision of continuing to grow that is important. And look, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's better to have someone that who's, you know, Sussex through and through, born and raised here to, to go back to, you know, dirt roads, or whether it's, you know, for me personally, I think that finding that, that, that middle ground, someone who came from a similar type of, you know, environment, a similar, you know, type of school and area that has a vision of growth, who, who's educated. And, you know, there's, I, I always say, there's a difference between being intelligent and educated, but I, I like to think that you're both.
Thank you.
You're, you're educated and you also seem to be very intelligent. But it's nice because you can be book smart and also, you know, sit at a board meeting and have, you know, and have really bad ideas. And I think that you have, you, you do a great job of logically think, thinking through things, which is like my hot button. I'm huge on like, let's just think of this like logically, you know, you know, you know, how do we step one, two, three, four, let's make sense of this. And I think that's important. So obviously, you know, that part and kind of hitting on technology is, is areas. Are there any other areas that you think that this school board in general can have a really positive influence on like the kids' experience and families' experiences?
I think always we need to be on the forefront of mental wellness for the teachers and the students.
Yeah.
Our role is, is, is not the place that you and I went to school. The, what the, the effect that social media has, the effect that school violence has on these children. It's, it's a completely different world. And the teachers are burnt out. They are, they are having to, to wear so many hats and to deal with so many problems. So they really need our support. And these, these kids just need constant, constant support for whatever it is they may be going through. If kids are hungry, if kids are in an abusive home, if kids are just, if their needs aren't attended to, they can't learn.
Sure.
Yep. So it's having the resources to support every child in the district, no matter what their background, no matter what their circumstance is, and the teachers as well. And it's, that's, those are physical resources. Those are resources with social work. Everyone needs, everyone needs that base to thrive.
Yeah. Yeah. My, my oldest daughter, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, she's type one diabetic. So she has, you know, things in, in place that allow her to do certain things, have her phone all the time and things that we, we keep her safe. And again, like I was saying earlier, we wake up, dress her and drop her off at school and are like, we are instilling like, yes, pure faith that you keep her safe. And we have monitors and phones and everything. We can see her numbers. But what they do to keep her safe, I mean, the nurse's attention to detail is absolutely amazing. And, you know, this year, the, the brand new middle school opened up and it opened up with a bit of some confusion because, you know, it was like a mad dash to get it done. And I, you know, felt so bad. I mean, the teachers really, they just took it with stride.
They sure did.
They literally are putting the gym floor down, you know, as we're going through orientations and everything. And I, you know, we go through, you know, this whole medical process with, with the school to make sure that everything's in place and everything goes out. And I think that some of the teachers may have overlooked it, which, you know, and so some things were happening that kind of weren't in place that, that, that should have been. And we called a quick meeting and, I mean, it was like that, done, taken care of. And they're like, we're so sorry. You know, it was a bit of chaos. And I'm like, look, I am not pointing fingers.
Absolutely. They are beyond responsive.
Yeah. And, you know, we had, we had a quick talk about it. But, you know, when we called and talked to the assistant principal and said, hey, we just, we're not angry. I just think we need to kind of have a quick meeting to get everyone on the same page, can get all the, all the teachers together. And it was like, and it was taken care of.
Absolutely.
Just, just, I mean, and that's, that's with our small needs of dealing with someone, someone with T1D. I mean, there's, you know, and at the consortium, you know, which I'm not sure for people that are watching this, if you have children with special needs, the consortium is just.
It's a world-class school.
Phenomenal. Absolutely phenomenal.
Very blessed to have in our district.
Yeah. A lot of schools don't.
No. And a lot of the school, and a lot of districts have to send their kids to our consortium for help, the, the services that they need.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I, again, I think that we're just super blessed. And I think that we're also super blessed to have people like you that are willing to volunteer your time to do this. You know, again, people that are watching this, these positions are, and this is just out of the kindness of your heart. No payments, no, no, nothing. You're doing this, you're campaigning, you're, you know, you're paying for signs, you're sticking signs all, all around and everything, truly campaigning, you know, for the position out of the truly kindness of your heart for, for.
Working tirelessly to make this happen. I, I want to be part of something, something great, a leadership team to support every child in this district. And so that every child can thrive, thrive beyond their wildest dreams.
Yeah.
And they can be set to enter the world and be highly productive, good people.
Yeah. So it is, May 13th is today, correct? And how and where does that happen?
Great question. So 7:00 AM till 8:00 PM on Tuesday, May 13th at Cape Penlopen High School.
Okay.
Mariner Middle School.
Okay.
Rehoboth Elementary and the Rehoboth Fire Station, which is on Airport Road next to Shelby Golf.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, like across from Giant.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So anybody who is a resident of the district just needs to take their ID and vote.
That's it.
Yeah.
You don't need like an electric bill with you. Just bring your ID.
Just your ID.
So if someone.
And you don't even need to be a registered voter.
Okay. So if you have recently moved here and you have not changed your ID over, you can't vote.
Correct. Not going to work.
You just have to have, have a valid.
That's right.
License.
Yes. You have to be domiciled in the district.
In the district.
In the district. So even if you have.
If you're Milford, you can't vote here.
Correct. Can't. Yep. So yes, even if you have a second home here, unfortunately, if your primary residence is out of state or somewhere else, that won't fly either.
So primary residence, driver's license at the addresses within the Cape Penlopen School District. Go to any of those places. Just show your ID, cast your vote.
Yep.
And kudos, you know, kudos to you, but kudos to all of you, all of you that are running. I mean, we can't, can't do it with everybody. And it's, it really gives people, you know, a true ability to, to contrast, you know, having people out there.
Yep. And everyone that's running, everyone has their different viewpoints and everyone has, has different things to bring to the table. I obviously would like the vote for me, for what I stand for.
I think you should vote for you too.
Thank you. I plan to. I do. I just hope I don't press the wrong button. Those machines can be tricky.
Yeah. So double check. Make sure. I'm not saying who I'm casting my vote for.
Fair enough.
But, you know, but no, I, you know, honestly, thank you so much for coming on, but more so. Thank you for, you know, just devoting so much of your time and energy to this and to your family. I mean, they're, they're doing it too. It isn't, it isn't just you. And not just now, but you know, if you get, when.
When, thank you.
When, when you get elected, you know, it'll continue.
Absolutely.
And they have to continue to support time. And, you know, Eric's got to.[1670.22]
Yes, and he's been fabulous. Eric's been like, shout out to my husband who has.
Shout out to Eric.
Picked up. I have, I have been MIA most nights of the week for the past, for the past month at least. Um, and he has picked up every, every ounce of slack yesterday. He said, you know, how can I help you the next, the next two weeks? Because they're crunch time. And he's, he's just taken a lot off of my plate. And my kids, and my kids, it's, it's awesome because they're learning and they're watching, which has been fabulous. Um, I, I, nothing, I don't do anything in my, I don't, I don't ask anything of others in my life that I don't do myself.
Sure.
So they, I, I walk the walk, I talk the talk. They are out with me, putting campaign signs on the ground. They've been to a school board meeting.
What a great learning experience too.
And we're talking about resiliency. We're talking about so many, I mean, they say, you know, my, they're boys, they're knuckleheads. They say to me almost every day, what if you lose? Like, well, we're going, we're going with positivity here, but it's, you know, and we, we've been talking about so many amazing life lessons that win, lose or other, it's, it's gonna be okay. They're seeing me champion for the greater good of every child in this district. And so.
But who knows what that, what's that sparking in them?
Absolutely.
For the future. Maybe they'll be governor someday, you know.
Maybe. And they, and, yeah, they, they, they can't fully understand what I'm doing right now. I would, I, I, it's, it is, even Eric has said to me, oh, my God, like, I had no idea what this was gonna be. So, and he's a grown man.
Yeah.
But these boys are just, they, they are absorbing everything they're watching all the time, the questions. So it's been, it's been just a fabulous educational experience for them on, on all these levels. Like I said, like, you know, win, lose or other. They're, they're watching me work really hard at something that I, I really care about. I'm so passionate. They've seen me cry. They've seen, you know, at, at home when I've had a long day or, you know, they, we talk about that, like, why are you, why are you crying? Are you sad? Like, or, or, you know, are you mad? Are you sad? Well, then we talk about emotions and why that's
Sure.
And and why that's happening.
Which is all part of life and it's all part of this, and it's all part of so many learning, life learning lessons in general.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure they're just so uber, uber proud of their mom, of everything that that you're doing. And, you know, like, like, you know, to your point, you know, whether you get it or not, I'm sure they're gonna be proud, but they're gonna be even prouder when, when mom does get it.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I hope so.
Yeah, yeah. But thank you so much, you know, on all fronts. And just make sure everybody, you know, no matter who you're voting for.
Absolutely.
Get out there on the thirteenth, you know, so again, like, one more time, high school.
High school, Mariner Middle School.
Middle School, which is in Milton.
Exactly.
Rehoboth Elementary, Rehoboth Firehouse on
On Airport Road.
On Airport Road.
Next to Shelby, I, I.
Shelby Golf.
Golf, yeah, yeah. Actually, one time I said Shelby Bounce, and I was like, no, no, don't go there. It's, I mean, I love them, but you can't vote there.
Yeah.
Uh huh. Next to Shelby Golf.
Got Shelby Golf on Airport Road.
Exactly. Seven AM to eight PM. So there's really no excuse. I, I know that people have, you know, obviously jobs and other things, other commitments, but.
Do it early, do it late.
Absolutely. Plan it on your lunch break. Um, just please, we just implore you to vote.
Yeah.
Please.
LP, LP.
Thank you. Yes, Laura Parsons.
Laura LP.
That's me.
I'm not any subliminal or anything, but no, but thank you so much. And best of luck to you.
Thank you, Cory.
And, you know, we're, we're rooting for you. Hope that you get it. And if so, you know, and for whoever it is, that we have great positive changes for our schools and for our kids and for everything else.
And I also, I always, just as an FYI, I have an open door policy in my life. So if anybody wants to message me, find me online, send me a message, I'm, I will respond to you.
Just be respectful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just be respectful.
But I, I believe in transparency. I believe in community. And I want to hear, I'm looking for feedback. I don't know it all. I I am looking for input. Um, I believe, I want, I want people to have access to me, even if there's things on the school board. It's a unique role. If there's things that we can't solve, um, the school board members are a conduit. So I can put you in touch with people who can help you if, if it's something that's above my pay grade. I can, we, you know, I can facilitate that.
You know how many things I've learned in the, in this industry from my kids? You know, just, you know, of me, and I, and I try to pride myself a little bit on, um, my success from being open. Learning from what other people, including my kids. You know, my daughter be like, Dad, why don't you ever do whatever? I'm like, I never even thought about that. What a, what a great idea. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll implement that. So I think that that's important. You know, some people, they, they get a little bit of that, you know, power or I get the position. And now it's like, oh, don't, you know, I'm who I am, don't talk to me. So I think that's huge.
People have already been reaching out to me with all kinds of issues. And I have, I have passed on every single issue. I've escalated things. Whether it's even been to Bob Fulton, whether it's been to other members of the school board, other agencies.